Good evening and welcome to the Vineland Board of Education Open Work Session Meeting for Wednesday, February 1st, 2017. Roll call, Ms. Haley?
Ms. Acosta?
Here.
Ms. Cottis Patti?
Present.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Yeah.
Mr. Pagano?
Ms. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Boardley?
Present.
Mr. Jennings?
Present. In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof, agenda, etc., the Daily Journal, the Press of Atlantic City, the Grapevine, the Clerk of the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. Let's all stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
A couple of quick announcements. Dr. Guccio is not feeling well, so Mr. Frangia Panty is sitting in for her, and Mr. Pagano finally got well enough to take his quick vacation that he had planned, so he was ill for the last couple of meetings. We have a resolution for executive session?
We do not. No? No.
Okay. Special presentations?
Yes, we do. We have three special presentations this evening. First, we have Ms. Vanessa Rasmussen from Vineland High School English Department. She's the chair. We'll honor the winners of the Poetry Out Loud for 2016-2017 school year.
Thank you so much for honoring my wonderful students Frances Vertuccio and Thomas Burgess, who've demonstrated exceptional poetry recitation skill and acumen. Frances and Thomas were the two winners from our school-wide Poetry Out Loud competition in which 20 students from various classes, including AP English Language and Composition, Drama and Theater, and Honors English competed over the course of two rounds for the title of school champion. Poetry Out Loud is a national poetry recitation competition that encourages students to explore poetry through memorization and performance. This was my fourth year serving as school coordinator of the contest, and I have to say that it was the best year yet. I enjoy every minute of it. Our work begins on the classroom level with lessons on poetic tone and analysis. We also watch, discuss, and analyze examples of successful student recitations from the Poetry Out Loud website. Each of my students chose a poem from the Poetry Out Loud website, memorized it, and recited it for his or her class. The same format was followed by several other classrooms and teachers. Students who delivered a strong performance participated in the school competition, which was well-attended and well-received. This year, we had more interest than ever, as well as representation from all four of our classes, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, which we've never had before. Competition was fierce this year, with excellent recitations from each of the 20 students. I have high hopes for the regional competition, which is in two weeks. Thank you so much for honoring Frances and Thomas and for supporting the Poetry Out Loud Competition field trip to the regional finals on February 15th. This event provides my students with an excellent educational experience and gives them the opportunity to see how successful Vineland High School students can be. I would also like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. and Mrs. Jennings for coming to the competition. We really value your support and participation. Thanks. Would you like to see Frances?
We have certificates. Are we going to have a reading by... Okay. Let's do that first.
Come on up, Frances. This is Frances Vertuccio. He is a sophomore. He is our school champion, and he'll be reciting for us.
Go through it?
Just through it.
The poem is "Speak" by Philip B. Williams. "A storm, and so a gift, its swift approach lifts gravel from the road. A fence is flattened in the course of the storm's worst attempt at language. Thunder's umbrage. A tree is torn apart and lone upward through a bedroom window. A boy winnows through the pile of shards for the sharpest parts from the blown-apart glass. He has a bag that holds found edges jagged as a stag's horns or smooth as a single pane, smashed into smaller panes, that he sticks his hand into to make blood web across his acheless skin. Flexing like fish gills, ollipped for a scream it cannot make. He wants to feel what his friends have felt, the slant of fear on their faces he could never recreate, his body configured without pain. When his skin's pouting welts don't rake a whimper from his mouth, he runs outside, arms up for the storm, aluminum baseball bat out to the sky, until lightning with an electric tongue makes his viscera luminescent." The boy's first word for pain is the light's new word for home. Thank you.
Next, we have a special presentation from the... It's part of the Cumberland County Positive Youth Development Coalition. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the coalition that I'm a part of. I'm a co-chair, along with Lynne Bowers. Lieutenant Lynne Bowers, she's in the back. Lynne? The Cumberland County Positive Youth Development Coalition is a countywide juvenile delinquency prevention program that's sponsored by the Attorney General's Office and the Cumberland County Freeholders. The coalition brings together stakeholders from education, law enforcement, social services, faith-based institution, and youth-serving organization in order to reduce juvenile delinquency and prevent those already involved in the juvenile system from becoming involved as an adult. There are four subgroups in the coalition: the county office, Bridgeton, Millville, and Vineland, and Vineland was the first to be part of the coalition. Each group takes on initiative each year. The Vineland group took on social media. Tonight, we're going to recognize those students who participated in the program, and their task was to do posts on Twitter for about a month, making positive comments to others out there on social media so they see it in a positive way. Tonight, we have to give the award. Along with myself and Lieutenant Bowers, we have Mr. Paul Spinelli, the city council president. Mr. Spinelli. And we have Great Gala Legal Analyst from the city. The person who will be giving the awards tonight was their sponsor, Mike Riggelnelli, also part of Southwest Council. Mike, do you want to come up?
Thank you, everyone. I've worked with these girls for a few years now as part of our Cumberland County Healthy Community Coalition's youth group called the Youth Network, and as well as their work in Vineland High School's Youth to Youth Chapter. This contest that was run by the Positive Youth Development Coalition was really focusing on showing that youth in Cumberland County, and especially youth in Vineland, can really stand up for positive things and positive change, and be positive role models amongst their peers on social media. The page that they put together on Instagram was called "Busting Bullying," and it was judged by an independent team of judges to be the winner. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our winners. Jessica Figaroa. And Emily Morton. Additionally, there was one additional member of this group who was unable to make it tonight, Jessica Rusumman.
Mr. Spinelli, if you also want to come up? I know the city has wanted to recognize the young people for their efforts. For our board members, I put a pamphlet in front of you this evening that describes a little bit more of the work that the coalition has been doing for the past four years. You have in-depth some of the services they've been providing and some of the activities the groups have taken on.
Ms. Marco, you ought to know when you're campaigning, you want to be seen, and when you're done campaigning, you don't want to be seen. The city of Vineland recognized the need to prevent bullying amongst our citizens' youth, both physically and virtually. Cyberbullying has become a growing issue within the nation. Jessica Rusumman, Jessica Figaroa, Kahana Gupta, and Emily Morton, using Instagram account "Busting Bullying" creatively, consistently, and cohesively promoted the community, building camaraderie amongst peers, and positive self-esteem to a larger community. Being a principal still part-time, cyberbullying is a big issue in school. Causes a lot of problems, especially in the middle-school age groups. I have resolutions, commending resolutions from council. I won't read them. There's a copy for everyone. Get them the mic before I leave. There is a proclamation from the mayor. He apologizes for not being able to be here. His brother is in the hospital. He's very, very ill. The proclamation states, "Whereas the Cumberland County Positive Youth Development Coalition is an initiative to prevent juvenile delinquency and also to encourage positive interaction for local youth with educational, law enforcement, social service, faith-based, and youth-serving organizations, and whereas the Vineland Breakout Group, which is a committee within the CCPY DC, recently coordinated a competition for high school and middle school students in which the students would use social media such as Facebook or Instagram to create accounts that promote positive messages. And whereas the winning high school team, who named themselves "Busting Bullying," consisted of, and all those names that we already mentioned, whereas the winning team, as well as all the contest participants, helped show how local youth genuinely care about society and strive to make their community a better place in which to live. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of Vineland commend the team of "Busting Bullying" for winning the CCPY DC Social Media Positive Youth High School Contest. Congratulations to all those participants."
Next, we have a student technology presentation. Our Catherine Rivera, our instructional supervisor, will lead the demonstration.
Good evening. This evening, we will have two presentations by our elementary students showcasing how they are integrating technology within their classrooms. The district has committed to a five-year strategic plan with technology acquisition and infusion as one of the five major goals. Technology has been gradually infused into the classroom, starting in middle school, and then moving to the elementary schools. When there is a contextual tie to what the students are doing in class with the technology, it lends a validity. Technology integration goes beyond substituting typing for writing. It provides students additional ways to express their learning, to go out and find information, and to collaborate not only with their teachers and classmates, but with their community. Students as young as kindergarten log in and utilize Google apps for shared activities. The current use of technology for assessing student learning, differentiating instruction, and providing rigorous, relevant, and engaging learning experiences for all students has fundamentally changed. This change is positive and will help prepare our students for the real-world environment. Next, I would like to turn it over to Lisa Arena and Kristen Speekman from Many School, and they will share the great things that are happening there. They will be followed by Debbie Quinn, principal at Winslow, who will also do the same.
Good evening, board members and the community. We're here to talk to you this evening about how passionately we feel about the integration of technology within the classroom setting. If we go back to 1989, 1990, all the schools in Vineland developed what was called the School Improvement Team, or a SIT, and I was president of the SIT at that time. We purchased about 30 Apple IIe computers. They were our first computers in our elementary school. They were housed within our library, and our children worked off of MECC software, Minnesota Educational Corporation, and they came on five-inch floppy disks. And we had floppy disks for every single subject throughout the grade levels, and at that time, Many's was a first-through-fourth-grade school. We've come a long, long way since then. Our children are not sitting on computers just typing answers to math problems or filling in the blank on English assignments. They are doing meaningful things on the computer, showing that they have learned all this technology. We had computer teachers. We had building-level technology coordinators, and they were all excellent and did a wonderful job. But as technology has grown, our children are now digital natives. There's the commercials on television that you see where the baby already has the iPad in its hand or the Apple phone in their hand, and they're doing things after they come out of the womb. They're taking pictures of the delivery and that kind of stuff. But really, that is the way. Parents start giving their children cell phones to amuse them. The children start figuring out how to work them, and by the time they get to elementary school, they are familiar with all of these devices. They have tablets at home that they are working on. So to make the transition into the classroom, it's very easy for them. Right now, Many's school has a one-to-one correspondence with Chromebooks from second grade through fifth grade. By the end of this month, we will be kindergarten through fifth grade, one-to-one Chromebook ratio. Currently, our kindergarteners have 10 Chromebooks in their classroom, and it's used kind of like their center time. They'll go on their Google Classroom, and they'll complete an assignment that the teacher has left for them, so they're already becoming familiar with the basics. And as they progress through the grades, they continue to build and build on those skills. I know Ms. Cottis Patti came in and visited us a while ago and saw what our children were doing. Some other board members have been there as well. They were just blown away by what a second grader was doing. So after Ms. Quinn speaks a little bit this evening, you're going to get to meet Ms. Morve and her two students, Emma Baker and Israel Avillis, and they're going to show you how technology is embedded within their classroom. So it's not an extra subject. It's not extra work. It's not an extra place to go to practice on a keyboard. They're practicing on their keyboard because they're doing meaningful instruction on a daily basis. Ms. Quinn?
Thanks, Lisa. I'm Debbie Quinn, principal, proud principal at Winslow School. I want to give a little shout-out Francis. Very proud of you. Former Winslow Whale, and Casey Rusumman, who was also acknowledged, former Winslow Whale. Again, Lisa really touched bases with a lot of the history of it and where we are. We've come a long way. I think even as educators, we have come so far. We are learning just as quickly as the children are, and sometimes maybe we're a little behind them. But having the devices in their classrooms, one-to-one, it's wonderful to hear Many's, they're right up there. All the elementary schools are coming on so that in the next year, we will have one-to-one everywhere. Currently, Winslow School has one-to-one devices, second through fifth grade. We have a shipment coming in in the next two weeks, and we will be one-to-one first through fifth grade. I'm sorry. Yeah, first through fifth grade. We do plan on purchasing in June when we get our new budget, and we get to purchase, we will purchase another batch so that by September, we will be one-to-one. Actually, we will be more than one-to-one at that point, and it'll be kindergarten through fifth grade. So this is great stuff because what's happening in the classroom, as Ms. Arena said, it's integration. They're not just playing games on an iPad or in a Chromebook. They're actually doing, and you're going to see some demonstration lessons. It's amazing to even Lisa and I, we've attended numerous, Ms. Speekman, Ms. Arena, and myself. We often go to all the ed camps and the things that Stockton College has offered. We've attended with Kat Rivera at many of the ed camps and the technology-type of expos. They offer them through the summer for administrators and teachers, free, and it's great that if we can continue, that would be great. Through ETTC, we get hours. What we've been seeing is that as long as we can provide our teachers with these devices, we are getting the integration. They're using it. It's a shift. It's a pedagogy shift that we've made. I know for Winslow School, it was one of our focuses because it is on the strategic plan for the district. We use this as a focus over the past two years to integrate and to get the devices in. Did we have to train teachers? Absolutely. We've been using countless hours of PD. It's motivating teachers and students. I've seen it make a great shift in our way we present teaching and in the things that we're able to do. We're preparing our students to be global learners, to be ready for that global, to be in competition with what the rest of the world is doing. So I don't want to talk anymore. We are going... You're going to see Ms. Samantha Travarelli Barbagli, a fourth-grade teacher from Winslow, and she has brought with her 11 students this evening, and when it's time to call them up, I'll say their names, but they're excited to show you all the great things they're doing. You're going to see three different types. You're going to see a quick little mini lesson using NearPod, which is using typing skills and drag-and-drop and cut-and-paste and things like that, but it's very connected to the curricular and to the core content standards. Also, next, she's going to be doing a web quest, and in the web quest, again, it's multimedia. You're going to see lots of things happening. At that time, we'll invite you down to, if you want to come and see what the children are actually doing. It's really neat to see right up close. And then finally, we're going to show some differentiated instruction. She has students from all of her reading groups here. She uses the devices right in the reading group. We don't just have them using books. We do still use books. Sometimes they're electronic, but a lot of times, they're chapter books that we still do use. We do utilize those. But the activities and follow-up and instruction that we use to differentiate is wonderful. And another thing I'd like to say, what we're finding as principals, the immediate feedback and data that we're able to collect using the integration-type model and the technology in the classrooms is fabulous. It's really helping our growth. It's helping to make kids and showing the growth that we're seeing happening here in Vineland. So it's my honor, and I think I'm turning it back over to Lisa to introduce her group, where I think Ms. Cruck is coming... I'm sorry. Ms. Morve is coming up with her two students at this time.
Okay. Emma is going to show you her Google Classroom, and...
Let me do Israel first.
Oh, you're going to do Israel first? Okay. And Israel is going to show you Google Slides and what he created for one of his grammar lessons.
So basically, they were working on verbs. We're teaching them past... Oh, past. Sorry. More than past. So they did just basic verb tenses, past, present, future. They had to take a verb, and I showed them how to create a simple Google Slide, because later in the year, their research project on a planet is... We do it all on Google Slides now. So just basically to teach them, he had to change the font, change the color, change the background, insert images. He added transitions to his presentation. So this was something, it was, you know, they needed to learn to do this, but I integrated the technology piece. So when we have to do Google Slides, he'll be great later on. So this is Israel. Hey. Go ahead and make it so it's... Oh, wait. Go back. And this, I'd say, we did in 40 minutes with the same, you know, our grammar lesson. So go ahead. So... Okay. Oh, you can't see that one. It's dark. I would be late because I have good... But just something, you know, tell them some of the things you learned to do. What did you have to do? Go ahead. Okay. What verb? He's going to be all shy. He just talks all day long. There you go. Go ahead. What did you have to... What are some things that you learned to do that I taught you to do? With like your font... Oh, that'll really help. What did you have to do? Come on. Pick your verb. So you're really not going to talk? I'm sorry. He's being shy. But anyway, was this difficult for you?
Yes.
No.
Can you teach us how to do it, Israel?
Like, can you add a slide? You have to add a slide. Remember how to add a slide? Where would you go to add a slide? There you go. Okay? Okay? So if you wanted to add your title, show them how you would change your font. How would you change your font? As you transition. Remember if you want to change this? Okay? Oh, my goodness. There you go. So just type something. Type your name. And the real thing that I like the most that I see them doing is they help each other. So if, you know, whoever's sitting next to him doesn't know anything, something, they really work with each other, which is really nice. Some kids are faster than others, and I do see a big difference with that, but by the end of the day, they're all getting it. Like, it's amazing that they're seven and eight... They're mostly seven right now, and they can go in. Go into Google Docs and open it. They do it. It's just like they understand the terminology, they understand what you're saying to them, and they enjoy it. It seems to keep their focus more than if, you know, you're just standing there and even, you know, love our Smartboards and everything like that, but to have that in front of them, it's just they're working on it one-on-one. It's just they love it, and I really love how much they help each other with it also. Okay? You good? Want to show me anything else? No.
Trust me. He talked to me. I went over everything with him today. Everything he was going to say to you. He got a little shy.
One of the things they had to do in one of our language arts standards, they had to read a story, "Super Storms," and then they had to create a poem about the storm. And this is something in the past that has been written. Instead of writing at this time, they created a Google Doc, and we worked on spacing, we worked on centering, changing the font, inserting images. They sent it right to me. I answered them back. They thought that was the coolest thing that I could write on their documents. They're like, oh, you know, like, Ms. Morve, this is so cool. And they would write back to me, and we were back and forth. So this was just basically, it was just their language arts standard, just working on poetry, and this was Emma's. Emma, you want to read it? Yes, we do. Come on, Emma. Do it. Do it. You can do it. Thunderstorms, rainy, windy, thundering, lightning, hailing, scared, happy thunderstorms.
Aww.
And then it was just, but this is something that, like, again, it took a period, they did it in their notebooks and then they learned how to insert pictures. Just the basic things that they're going to use later on. Another thing that we use a lot is our Google Classroom. Go to Google Classroom, please. There you go. Okay, so I split mine up into math and reading and writing, so go into reading. What are some things, Emma, that we do on here?
Assignments.
Assignments, yeah. What's this, what you did yesterday, what's this thing you did? Remember that?
Quizlet.
Quizlet, what do we use that for? What do you review on that, your?
Your vocabulary words.
Right. And this is, they also practice on this website, they practice their typing, they're matching up their vocabulary words so they're ready for their tests every week. And then, like, in her reading group, she's reading a chapter book. So, that day, what did you have to do that day?
Tell Mrs. Morve about the deadly skin.
Right, you had to summarize, they had to summarize what they read in the chapter for the day. And, you know, that was their reading group, and I was able to give them feedback on that. We also, I also give them assignments, they know how to go in here. What else we use it for?
Reading and writing.
Reading and writing, yeah. And it's easy for them to find links. They don't have to always, you know, type in, Nearpod, type in, they know to go here. There's a lot of review things on there, they can go on at home, I let them do. They just, they're really quick with it and we use it a lot, almost every day. And between this and Think Central for our math and reading program, I mean, they're on that every day too. And it's great because they don't have to carry their books home and back and forth, it's just right there for them.
We have many of our students logging on at home after school hours, and many students receive Chromebooks for Christmas this year. Just as assistant principal, I, every day, get a lot of Google Docs shared with me. Mrs. Speakman, just so you know, this happened on the bus, I didn't get a chance to see you in the hallway, so, all of our teachers are using Google Classroom, K to five. And remember, this is second grade, they're logging onto that classroom, they're getting their assignments via Classroom, and they can, they have the option to do homework via Google Classroom too, it's not required, but again, many of our students do have access to a tablet or Chromebook at home.
Yeah, I get spelling homework.
And the parents love it, they love it, rather than the three times each, that's torture of handwriting.
You know, and like, they're even changing the fonts and the colors, I mean, they're seven. So to me, learning that and starting it at this age, you know, they're really, they teach me things all the time. They're like, look at this, and I'm like, oh, that's cool. So, you know, they're, and like I said, they're excited about it, they enjoy it, and I don't see how teachers wouldn't want to do this with the kids. It's just something I enjoy and they enjoy it and they're excited about it. So, anything to keep their interest and they're getting smarter, ask me. And it's not extra work.
No, it's working smarter, not harder.
Being smart, right? Yep. So that's, do you have any?
Yeah, do we have more children to?
That's Mrs. Barbagli's class.
Oh, okay.
These are just my, these are my second graders, she is fourth grader.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to bring up our Winslow, our little Winslow Whales. Go ahead, guys, go up and get your Chromebooks. Find your Chromebooks with your stickies on them. Mrs. Travarelli-Barbagli, she teaches fourth grade at Winslow School. One lucky thing, a couple of weeks ago, we had Mr. Bumpus from the, he's Assistant Commissioner of Education, he came down, he spent a little bit of time in Mrs. Barbagli's class and was very impressed with what we had fourth graders doing, it was pretty neat to see. They're motivated, it helps motivate them, they're engaged, I've never seen more engagement than we've seen in the past two years with using these books. Mrs. Barbagli is going to start with a Nearpod, she's going to do a quick little mini Nearpod lesson. And in Nearpod, they're going to be able to use the cross vocabulary, I guess they're using, you want to say more about it?
So, Nearpod is an interactive learning tool that can be used cross-curricularly as we use it in our classroom. And, boys and girls, you should be on your Google Classroom, and on Google Classroom, the first assignment says Nearpod, so click on the Nearpod link, and I am going to airplay the code, it's Plum Board Room. And this is just how we would do it in our classroom. Okay, please type in the code that's on the TV.
Students are used to doing this, they do this all day long, plugging in the codes that are needed for whatever lesson is coming up.
I gotta ask for help on this.
If you would like to come down and, you know, you guys are more than welcome to come down and see it right up close, if you'd like, please feel free. They know that board members might come down and, they're not afraid, hopefully. Hopefully, they're not going to get shy on me.
So they all type in their name and they sign into the lesson. And what's nice about Nearpod is that the teacher controls all of the slides, and the slides are also interactive. So, boys and girls, we're going to review the four types of sentences. We have declarative sentences. Who knows what punctuation is the ending punctuation for a declarative sentence? A period. And what about an interrogative sentence? What type of sentence is that, Ally? Very good. And an imperative sentence, who can explain what an imperative sentence is?
Imperative sentence, a command.
Very good, it gives a command. And what about an exclamatory, Jaman?
It tells about expression.
Good, it shows really big emotion, right? And it ends in what?
Um.
An exclamation point, very good. And we also talked about simple sentences and compound sentences. Who can tell us what a simple sentence is? Who remembers?
A simple sentence is a sentence that only has one sentence.
Good. And what about a compound? A compound, Mackenzie?
Compound sentence is a sentence made up of two or more sentences.
No, they're going to do three different things, I'm going to show you three different things.
Good. So now, we're going to practice that. We are going to look at a few sentences and you are going to draw in, using your trackpad, the correct punctuation for each sentence. Ready? All right. You should be right in front of you. So on my device, as the teacher, I can see all of the students' work, and I'm airplaneing that, normally I wouldn't, but you will be able to see what they do. So I can see everything that they do, and Nearpod also collects data, where I can print the data, I can save the data, it gives me percentages, I can use it for all type of assessing.
This is that real-time data that we talk about, I mean, we really, we're able to change and shift things so much faster than we had been years before. I'm sure Mrs. Arena would say the same.
Oh, yeah.
And we're seeing this too, a lot of times, like Mrs. Speakman said, they're sharing this information with us digitally too, so we're able to see what's going on in the classroom. I may say, hey, Mr. Frangipani's visiting, or let's go in and see this lesson right now, she's in the middle of doing a Nearpod, let's go check it out, real time.
Boys and girls, now we're going to go to simple and compound sentences, okay? So I'm going to switch the slide, remember, we're skipping around today. So what we're going to do is you are going to turn and talk to your table, if you'd like. I'm going to show you an image and you're going to come up with a compound sentence to describe that picture. Ready? There you go. So you can talk with your table. All right, compound, someone here, the comma and the conjunction.
And although the teacher's using it as a display tool to show that, it's on their own devices, so from there, they can create it, work in collaborative groups like they're doing now, sometimes doing a similar thing in a small group, differentiated group.
Okay, now what I would like you to do is type that sentence that you just created, that compound sentence. Don't forget your punctuation.
You can see the participation percentages going up as they're turning in their work. As soon as they share, that pops right up on the screen.
Very good. And then that would happen throughout the entire lesson if I were to do the whole thing. Okay, boys and girls, great job. Now I want you to go back to Google Classroom, and the second assignment on our classroom should be your Martin Luther King Jr. web quest.
Okay, so she completed, that was a little sample of a Nearpod, which she just did with students, and now we're going to switch in and show you a little sample of a web quest. And this is something that the children did work on, I believe, last week.
Yes.
And, go ahead, Ms.
Okay, so for a few days, we worked on this web quest, and we learned a lot more about Martin Luther King Jr., and we also were able to practice all of our technology skills. So open up your web quest on Google Slides. Does anyone have their web quest up? Okay, so go to slide two. And they're, all the students on their computers, they have their completed work. So what did we, who would like to share, what did we do on slide two? Who remembers? Georgina?
We, um, looked up the fact that Martin Luther King was killed.
Okay, so we, well, for this one, we clicked on the link, right? And we read an article, and then what did you do in the box with learning the basics?
I, um, read the fact.
Yeah, so they typed in five important facts after visiting the link on the slide and after reading the article. And then now, let's go to the next slide. What did we do on slide, is it three? Slide three. Mackenzie?
We got on Kindle and looked up a picture of Martin Luther King giving a speech, and then we inserted the picture.
Very good. So who can explain, how do you insert a photo? How do you insert a picture? Who can explain it? Dawson?
Yeah. Insert.
And for this particular assignment, you had to find a picture of Martin Luther King Jr. giving a speech, and you all did that so well. So then, we skipped over videos just for a moment, but then what did we do when we went to knowing the facts? How did we do that? This was our real research. What did you have to do for this? Hugh?
We had to go on Kindle and search up facts about Martin Luther King.
Yeah, you had to look up the specific question. And what did you do? Do you remember? Did you copy and, go ahead.
I copied and pasted the website that it was on and I, I pasted it on to.
Yeah, for the sources, very good, very good. And then what else did we do? Let's see. Oh, and then we created a flyer, we put it all together. Go ahead, show your flyers. How did you get the text on the flyers? What did you do? Georgina?
The, um, text boxes.
Good, you had to create your text box, and some of you discovered that you could slant your words and slant your text boxes. And then we went back to that one slide, inserting videos. And Everett, would you like to share how we insert videos?
Um, you go to insert, and then you click video, and then you can add a search video, or do something else.
So you could save it?
Yeah, save it.
Very good. And Everett figured that out on his own. That was one of the skills that we were still learning, so we said we would skip that slide and go back, and he learned it through self-discovery.
Discovery.
And then we all shared the knowledge.
That's fantastic.
Very good. Okay, now go back to Google Classroom.
And now, I think we're going to show differentiated. This is an activity that Mrs. Barbagli did in a reading group, and she's going to be showing Padlet. It's, Padlet is like using little Post-its electronically, they're like putting little Post-its onto whatever the image or whatever the assignment would be.
Okay, so each of my reading groups, my Eagles group, Phillies, and Flyers, each created something different for your, at the end of your novel study. So why don't you pull up your assignment? So some of you created Google Docs, and then one group created a Padlet. Let's see if this opens. Do you have it on yours? Very good. And a Padlet, you, is like a digital bulletin board almost, you can do, the options are endless. And what this particular group did was, I told them to just give me a book review or a book project of what you learned from reading this chapter book. And they created all different digital sticky notes, typing, inserting photos.
It's one of my favorites.
Background images. One group on Google Docs identified the theme of a story, they wrote about two paragraphs, typing. We do all of our writing, published writing pieces on Google Docs. And then another group did another Padlet book review by typing. So we can, we can see all of our responses and they're on a creative page, interactive page. And they were each able to do whatever they wanted to show their understanding.
All right, I just want to announce their names because I was remiss in doing so. So, boys and girls, raise your hand when I say your name, I'm just going to look around. Alessandra Parent, we have Quentin Torres, we have Dawson Carter, we have Georgina Challow, Luciana Day, Isabella Cooney, Mr. Everett, our self-discovery guy there, Mr. Everett Kronk, we have Jaman Bennett, we have Frankie Celebré, Mr. Sammy or Samuel Vitro, and last but certainly not least, our little Mackenzie Johnson, who was sick most of the weekend, she got here and had to be here for the presentation tonight, she was at school today too. But I want to thank them all, you guys did a fabulous job, thank you for sharing. You guys can close your Chromebooks, and I did tell you your little secret, you're allowed to borrow them for the night, as long as they come back to school tomorrow. Parents, I want to thank you too, thank you very much to our parents. That's the conclusion of our presentation. If you have questions of either Lisa or Kat or I, we're here if you need to ask any questions or.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're ready to continue? Not yet, Nate? Give me a few minutes.
I also want to thank our principals and supervisors and the students for being here this evening, it was a great presentation. Next is our Hib report. Any questions or concerns? I think this month, they were all unfounded.
Comments by the board solicitor?
None.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Frangipani with the consent agenda.
Under Personnel, 1.1, discussion regarding the approval of the following: retirements, resignations, terminations, leaves of absence, employment, transfers, students, substitutes, extracurricular activities, and volunteers.
Any questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, thank you.
Procedures and Operations, 2.1, discussion regarding the approval of field trips, district travel, athletic spring schedule, and additional scheduled dates for girls' crew.
Questions, comments, anyone? Seeing none, thank you.
Building and Grounds, 3.1, discussion whether to change the name of Violin High School North to the name of an individual meeting the qualifications of Policy 7250.
Questions or comments, anyone?
The only thing I'm going to ask is maybe if Mr. DeSano, I know we get it, but for the, could explain that policy a little bit better for the audience?
In April of 2016, the board adopted Policy 7250, which sets forth detailed procedures for the naming of a building or the naming of what we call a facility, which is a part of a building, a section of a building, or some ground area. Under the policy, there's a procedure if the request is initiated by the public, and there's another procedure if the, if the procedure is initiated by the board. What you have before you tonight is a request by the Violin High School Historical Committee to name- to name Violent High School North after Mr. Tanner. So that letter is the initiation of our procedure for the naming of a school or facility initiated by the public. So tonight, if you were going to have any discussion, your discussion is not whether to name the school after Mr. Tanner, it is whether or not you want to change the name of Violent High School to any individual that meets the qualifications of our policy. The reason behind the policy is that even though the polit, the procedure has been init-
Mr. DeSanto, you're not changing the name Violent High School, you're just naming the building.
I'm sorry.
It's still Violent High School.
It's still Violent, I'm sorry. To change the name of the, um, to dedicate the building in the name of a worthy individual, right? If I went to correct my, thank you, G. So what happens is that if you decide that your, your intention, the consensus tonight, if you have a discussion, is to leave things alone, then nothing gets moved to next week, to the regular meeting. If you decide you are going to, uh, name the building in honor of a, an individual, then next week is when you have an official vote on it, and then from there, Mrs. Haley is then to advertise for nominations with supporting data, so that the public is given an opportunity to have the Board consider other worthy individuals. And then the process continues after that. There's a period of time, the nominations are closed, there will be a special meeting at which the Board will consider any and all the nominations, and then a decision is
Thank you, Mr. DeSanto. So do we have questions or comments or discussion regarding, um, what Mr. DeSanto has explained to us?
Basically, your decision tonight, because you don't really vote at a work session, your decision tonight is, what are you going to advance, if anything, to next week's meeting?
Right.
Are you going to advance no change? Are you, you know, and therefore no action next week? Are you going to, uh, advance a, a motion next week for the Board to vote whether or not to name and to dedicate that building in the name of a worthy individual?
Right.
Mr. DeSanto's, would we need a motion then to, to tonight?
Not tonight, no. No, no. No, it's basically a consensus of the Board, so the superintendent knows what to put on the agenda for, for your consideration. Yeah, the only thing you, the consensus or vote tonight is really not on the merits of the thing, but what is it you're going to move to next week's agenda? That's, that's the thing. The approval has to take place at a regular meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I believe that, um, I think, uh, based on the recommendation of the Historical Society, I think that I would like to see this on the agenda for next week, so that we can vote on changing the name of the building.
Or dedicating it to-
Or dedicating it to-
An individual.
An individual who qualifies.
An honored individual. We understand what you mean.
Yes.
I agree. I think, uh, our former Vice President, Brian Dewey, made a very strong case in that, and renaming it North to a worthy individual. I would support that as well.
I would support it also. I think, after listening to our, um, prior President and Vice President, they, they did both, especially Mr. Dewey, make a good, um, reason why we should do this, so I'm all for it.
Guys, understand that we're opening it up to everybody.
That's correct.
Okay, that means we, we open up, we, we go by the policy.
Right, it's not one individual, it's...
Okay. Anyone? John, anything?
Well, it's a well-deserved tribute for a man who laid down his life for a student. Number one, I happen to have a little bit of personal bias, because he was my eighth grade shop teacher and a man that I respected a great deal at Landis School.
Anybody? Ms. Rios, you have anything?
I don't see why we have to voice anything now. I think if we want to move forward with it, then it gets placed on the agenda and voted on next Wednesday, as we normally do with anything else.
That's all you're asking for tonight?
One is casting a vote for against anything other than, is this the motion that you will entertain next week? So it appears you have a consensus here, and the, you know, after the vote next week, then we'll know what the next step is. And this will go under 10B on next week's agenda, which is a initiated by, I'm sorry, a Board, Board Member's proposal. This is not a superintendent recommendation, it's a Board Member proposal, so, uh, I'll-
7B? 7B?
I think it's 10B on the, it might be 7B on a worksite, but 10B on the regular meeting agenda. But I'll work that out with Dr. Grugio's office. So it appears you have a consensus that we'll move forward next week.
All right, Mr. Frangipani?
Under Finance, 4.1, discussion regarding the approval of budgetary transfers, general school-based and EPCa, December 2016.
Discussion, questions? Anyone? No? Thank you.
4.2, discussion regarding the approval of the Secretary, the Board Secretary and Treasury reports for December 2016.
Comments, discussion? Seeing none?
4.3, discussion regarding the approval of special education student placements.
Comments, discussion? Seeing none?
4.4, discussion regarding the approval to authorize the Board Secretary to advertise and receive competitive bids, request for proposal during the 2017-2018 school year.
Comments, discussion, anyone? Seeing none, thank you.
4.5, discussion regarding, regarding the approval of tentative tuition rates for the 2017-2018 school year.
Comments, discussion? Seeing none, thank you.
4.6, discussion regarding the approval of tuition contracts between Cumberland County Technical Education Center and the Violent Board of Education for the 2016-2017 school year for the following amounts: share of time, 130 students at $1,000 per year, a year, for $130,000. Strive, three students at $12,500 a year, $37,500. $37,500, I apologize. E.S.Y., one student at $2,000 a year, $2,000. Total, $169,500.
Comments, questions, anyone? Seeing none?
4.7, discussion regarding the approval of Student Transportation Contract Addendum for $10,800 to include an aide at the rate of $50 per day, per route, for two 21st Century routes effective January 3, 2017, with a final adjusted contract amount of $600,000,
Comments, discussion? Seeing none?
4.8, discussion regarding the approval of the following in regard to the Cumberland County Regional Cooperative Transportation, 2016-2017 transportation addendums for these routes with the Cumberland County Regional Cooperative. Curry Bus Service Route 802, number one. Shepherd Bus Service Route 17-007, number one. Great American Trolley Route 17-107, number one. B, B, 2016-2017 contract for the Cumberland County Regional Cooperative. Route 7, 17-066, vendor Shepherd Bus Service, per diem amount of $104. Route 17-148, Curry Bus Service, per diem, $250. 17, Route 17-150, Great American Trolley, per diem rate, $315. 7, Route 17-179, Curry Bus Service, per diem rate, $165. Route 17-180, Curry Bus Service, route, per diem rate, $250. Route 17-181, CJ Bus Service, per diem rate, $127. Route 17-182, vendor CJ Bus Service, per diem rate, $139. Route 17-184, Delaware City Bus, per diem rate, $105. I'm sorry, $101.95. C, 2016-2017, out-of-district joint agreement with the Cumberland County Regional Cooperative, Route 17-183, Deerfield Township Board of Education. D, record and award bid, number six, 2016-17, Student Transportation, Curry Bus Service, in the amount of $231 per diem. E, transportation statistics update for December 2016.
Questions or comments, anyone? Could he repeat that?
Mrs. Haley, just to educate the public, these, they're just regional cooperative, this is all money that's reimbursed to the district, correct?
Right, we have a separate entity called Cumberland County Regional Cooperative. We took that over from CC Tech. What we do is we put, uh, bus routes out for bid for other districts, as well as our own. So we do receive some money for doing that, and sometimes we transport the students as well, and it saves us on what we used to pay Cumberland County Co-op.
Thank you.
Mr. Frangipani?
Okay. 4.9, discussion regarding the approval of this donation in accordance with Board Policy Number 7300, disposition of property, three desks to the Violent Police Department.
Comments, discussion, anyone? Seeing none?
4.10, discussion regarding the approval of the bus advertisement for Frank's, Frank Wells paving.
Comments, discussion?
I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Howard Wells. He's a, a very valued supporter of our district, and a very great family, so thank you.
4.11, discussion regarding the approval of the implementation of the recommendations from the Corrective Action Plan from the New Jersey Department of Education on Tiny Tots Early Childhood Education Center.
Comments, discussion? Seeing none, thank you.
Number two, regular agenda, none. Under B, item proposed by the Board President or a Board Member for discussion. Number one, discussion regarding the return of elementary school computer classes, Mr.
Mr. Medio?
Uh, this was something that I received a lot of input from the public on, and as we saw tonight, there are a lot of things being done with the computer program. We have, what, approximately 3,000 elementary students? Do they take some kind of a basic test to show that they're on a, the level they should be on in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, et cetera, in computer knowledge, I guess you'd call it?
Do, Nate, you have an answer?
No, there's no test given to students. It's, um, as you saw tonight, infused in the curriculum and bring kids to their potential as they move through the curriculum. No test, kindergarten special.
Is there any standardized testing on that?
Yes, there's standardized testing in grade eight.
Eight.
What's our passing rate?
Anything else, anyone?
I'll just, uh, comment, you know, the educators that have taken this, uh, that have managed to implement this process, you know, through our cost-cutting measures that we've been required, uh, I think they all deserve some kudos for, uh, what they've spearheaded. And obviously, I have a son in, in first grade, and he can probably use a computer better than I can. So it's, it's very uplifting to see what, um, these educators have managed to do with these kids, so congratulations to you guys, and thank you.
Great job. Anything else? Mr. Frangipani?
Okay. Discussion regarding the committee of, of the whole budget review, Mr. Sabrana.
Thank you. Just want to continue the discussion we started at the last meeting, about, at a certain point in time, having the Board function as a committee of the whole, so that with complete transparency, we could discuss the options being put on the table in regard to the budget for 2017-2018. I believe there was some discussion about that with the prior Board, Mr. Dewey and Mr. English, and I was, under the impression at least, that that's how we were going to be moving forward. With all due respect to the people serving on the committee, I would like to recommend that when, when we are at the stage where we have, uh, concrete numbers in regard to the budget, the budget shortfall, and the options in regard to closing those numbers, that there's discussions be held in public, on television, so that everyone out there knows what, what's going on.
Any, um, comments, questions from anyone else concerning that? No? Thank you.
Next, review of the December 2016 bills.
Any questions, comments? Bills? No? Okay, we have an opportunity for the public to address the Board. Five minutes per person, and I believe this is for any item, and Mr. Brian Dewey, former Vice President.
Good afternoon, good evening, Board. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. My name is Brian Dewey, a proud alumni at a class of high school, 1983, um, parent of a student, uh, who attends school, parent of student, graduate, and former Board Member. I came here to speak to you about the resolution in, in Section 3 as far as naming a building. I understand the policy, I understand there's no one, uh, at this point, in order to nominate names, that would have to, um, be moved by you to a vote, you would have to approve that, and then there'd be a public hearing for names. I'm going to try not to say the, the name of the person that's been floated, um, just, I'm hoping that you all see, um, the opportunity to do something great. Last I spoke here on this podium, I believe, was in the late 90s. I think two people sitting back there were there, that's Bob DeSanto and Eugene Medio, and that was regarding the Red and Gray Gridiron Club, which myself, Scott English founded. We were here in support with several dozen people from the public, former alumni, um, former, um, students, uh, business people, to encourage the district to spend some money in Geton setting, which was approved, and now we have a beautiful facility, minus the natural grass, which maybe Mr. Boardley can get some turf there. But, um, when, when Ms. Marco published an article, there was, my name was put there, and, and I'm not looking for any recognition, but I received numerous messages asking if, if, if we should come to this meeting to speak, and I explained, no, because first of all, the Board has to decide this, and I'll try and relay your messages to the Board. If the Board agrees to allow this building, not the high school name as Mr. Medio mentioned, to be named, then, um, then that's the time to come out and show your, uh, you know, support. As far as discussions that you'll have, whether it's behind coasters or here, as far as cost, I'm sure that money can be privately raised, if there's a signage we're talking about. But as you start this new school year, there's an opportunity for this Board to do something that's really, really great, to bring the community together, to right a wrong, and to do something very special. So I'm, I'm speaking to you, I, I really didn't want to be here, come to many Board meetings this close afterwards, but, and you may ask, why am I asking or speaking now versus when I was in the Board seat with Mr. English? And there was a question that came up during the year about, um, if I can be, um, objective. And so that just said, you know, if we're going to do this, let's do it right, let's not taint the process, and hopefully by myself being a member of the public, Mr. English as well, that we can, um, do this the right way and honor some, someone who's truly deserving. So, Board, I, I sincerely hope you take this, um, matter seriously, and, and, and move forward, so that we can have a conversation whenever you deem, uh, necessary, if this gets approved, as far as the next step of the policy. as the next step of the policy. Thank you for your time, I wish you well during this budget season in this school year, and that's all I'm going to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewany. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Frangipani, members of the board. My name's Lee Burke, I've been here before. I wanted to talk briefly about four or five quick things. First, on the technology, I think the presentation was excellent, and I think the answer that Mr. Frye gave about the percentage of students testing well by 8th grade is terrific. It's all in line with the strategic plan, which had as goal number two, technology, no excuses, and in the November meeting of a follow-up for the second year, all has been accomplished. And to me, I'm quite proud that this public has had the input they've had up to this point, and that it is being implemented, not all of it, as well as we'd like it to, because of budget and other reasons too. But as far as new positions versus technology, to have more and better opportunities for the young children in elementary grades all the way through high school, I think that's something that you have to think about in your upcoming meetings. As far as transportation, I think this is a good idea, that we've expanded our services through the Alliance, and we are reimbursed, but I'm also concerned about the shortfall of $400,000 that was mentioned by Mr. Cavallini in the early meetings with the school district because of the miscommunications between the charter school and this school, they starting early, if you remember. I don't know how that money would make up, or I'm not even sure how it's broken down, but that might be something of interest to the public as well as yourselves. As far as naming, as you may know, I have some fundraising background, and as crass as it may sound, asking people for money is not something that shouldn't be considered. We all have our reasons for wanting to donate or support certain things, and with the shortfall coming from the state, at this point anyway, or worse, I think that the Island Education Foundation needs to be restructured and take on the role of soliciting funds for purposes that we need to benefit our students. As you know, the CC Tech received a $1 million grant with the naming of Mr. Scarpia on it, and that was granted through their foundation, and it's operating, and it's included money on how to fundraise to improve the foundation's activities and that. For all purposes, and I did attend a foundation meeting with Ms. Inez, I think, she was there too, it's defunct, it's not working like it should. So we're going out and we're fighting other schools. There is a New Jersey School Foundations Association that works together throughout the state to help the foundations do well and to support the budget of the district where it's needed, and can't find other funding from the state or other ways. I support the naming of any building, or facility, or room, or computer. As a fundraiser, there's many opportunities for people to give money to the school, and it doesn't necessarily have to go directly through to the board, although Ms. Haley may have some thoughts on that. But the point is, we have a 501(c)(3) that can do a lot more than we've allowed it to do now. The only money in it now, I think, is for the Gear Up Program, which has been sitting there for some time. The fourth thing is, I don't know what the status of the real estate is for the selling of the buildings that have been voted on to close, and I would like that maybe considered for the agenda next week. And lastly... I think I'll skip the last one. Maybe just end with a comment, that we'd like to know all the committee members' names, who's serving on what committees, if that could be addressed maybe tonight, or in the website, or some other means, because I don't think we know who's doing what. I support the budget of the whole process, we've used it before successfully. The Finance Committee obviously has a lot of information, hopefully, or will be getting it, and so there's a lot of information that the public should have beforehand, I think, as soon as possible, on any changes that are being proposed. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public? Thank you very much. Any committee reports?
I do.
Kim?
Um, first, the preschool liaison, I met with them, and we're just getting back into this school year, so I'll have more once I meet with them again. Curriculum and Instruction, we had a meeting the other night, my minutes are on the website, thanks to Mr. Frye, so. We discussed Health and Safety Emergency Response Plan Review, discussion of course-name change from mass media, and the arts to mass media and communications. We had a discussion of the addition of AP, which is APES, Advanced Placement Environmental Sciences, for the 2017-2018 school year. We discussed the student technology presentation tonight, which I thought was absolutely awesome. Those little kids were doing more than I could ever do, they were teaching me while I was sitting there watching. And we also had a discussion on our website, accessibility features and school content. It has now been moved on to the first page, our Complete District Calendar, which is something that I would have, I've liked to have seen before, but it was moved on there. I know the board members were a little anal about, we'd like to know what's going on in the schools, so we can get there. So if the, there are a lot of schools that are great and put every event, everything that they're doing on the calendars, which we think is wonderful. There are a couple of schools that need to catch up a little bit. We like to attend as many events as we can get to, but if we don't see them, we can't get there. And we know you guys are just as busy as everybody else, so we know not everything's going to get up, and we know we're not going to get a paper invite to everything, so if you just clock in and there, and get it on there, we can see it, and we can try to get to, or at least one of us can try to get to, you know, your school events, because that's why we're here. It's very important that we see what the kids are doing and what you guys are doing, because it's awesome for the district, our district is just awesome, so, thank you.
I'm the Chair of the Facilities Committee, we met January 26. Some things that were discussed, as Mr. Dewany alluded to, improvements to Gethon Stadium, specifically turf field. We're moving forward with speaking to a sports architect to make sure we'll know what exactly the costs would be into that. We're also meeting with the City of Island, Mayor Finucci, and Council President Paul Spinelli, about some type of cooperation that we can do with them, being the field is also used by city rec leagues. As Mr. Burke alluded to, we are trying to get the Island Education Foundation involved to raise some money to help offset costs on that. Mr. Weaver had in his budget some improvements to the boys' and girls' locker rooms at the high school, it's in desperate need of updating. That was already in the budget for next year, under the maintenance budget. We discussed Almond Road Preschool, with the enrollment being down, unable to fill the rooms, the board had voted to move away from that lease. We spoke about the architect of record annual contract, and the committee is going to move forward with asking the board to go to a comparable bid. We discussed that administration office move to Landis in the near future, and discussed financials with that, and that's all being worked out with the city as well. We also discussed sale of properties that we, we discussed a past board meeting, disposing of properties through sales that we currently have no use for.
Mr. Jennings, I just want to answer Mr. Burke's question, as far as the committee members for curriculum and instruction, it's myself, Mr. Jennings, Mr. Fiocchi, Mr. Sabrana, and my administrators, Mr. Frye.
We'll get that posted on the webpage somewhere, the committee list.
Absolutely.
You had said comparable bid, I just want to say, just so nobody gets scared, we're going to do a comparable process, which just means we contact other districts to get their fees for their architect to compare it to ours, we're not really doing a bid, I didn't want Mr. Marrikey to get scared or anything. We're just doing a comparable process to make sure the fees are in line.
Thank you. Inez?
I chair the Policy and Personnel Committee. On the committee is Mr. Sabrana, Mrs. Cottisbody, Mr. Boardley, and also present are Dr. Rossi and Mr. Frangipani. Dr. Rossi, actually, we met tonight before this meeting, and Dr. Rossi was kind enough to give us an explanation and where we stand with respect to the interview process and the current status for employment of armed security personnel. We also discussed possible litigation from former employees. Dr. Rossi also discussed upcoming tenure charges against certain employees. With respect to policies, the committee discussed two specific bylaws, which were, which we revised, or were, and these revisions are mandated by law, and that is Bylaw 0151, Organization Meeting. We had a discussion of Bylaws 0155, Board Committees, and we made some revisions there. With respect to mandated changes for policy regulations, there are some revisions on Policy 1510, which is the Americans with Disabilities Act, Policy 2418, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and also there's some revisions with respect to Policy and Regulation Number 8330, Student Records. And we'll try to have those revisions also, they will be online, and generally, they're highlighted, or they're bolded, so that you can see where the revisions are. And that's about it.
Thank you, Inez.
That we talked about, about trying to make, get the policies, people like to see the policies, and we're going to try to see if we can make them user-friendly on the website. We're going to talk to Mr. Frye, we just didn't get a chance to talk to him yet, about trying to make them more user-friendly, so parents, students, board members can have better access, so that we can like, maybe click on the link and see what they actually are, so when we're talking about them, you know, you guys could know too.
Yes, we did, we did discuss that, and also, I just wanted to mention, the committee reviewed the uniform policy, and the committee made some suggestions with respect to some changes that is necessary for some of the schools, based on feedback that we're getting. So Mr. Frangipani is going to form a committee of principals to review the policy and collect their recommendations, and then report back to the Policy and Personnel Committee, so we'll keep you informed, all right?
Okay, thank you. Bob, you have something? I keep putting, you ready?
I'm ready.
Go ahead.
All right, Finance Committee, we met Tuesday of this week, a couple of things that we discussed, the current contract for our health insurance broker ends on June 30 of this year, so Ms. Haley suggested that we switch the commission request from percentage to a dollar amount, the board agreed with that. And as Mr. Boardley talked about, we also talked about the Architectural Services, switching to comparable process rather than RFP, and we also all agreed with that. Next, Ms. Haley, whatever, the budget calendar, so the governor's going to be releasing, the budget dress will be on February 28, and then the state aid amounts will be released two days after that, on March 2. And after that, the budget is due to the county on March 20, so we don't have a huge amount of time, but we'll make it happen. Next, Ms. Haley, Mr. Mrerel presented a balanced budget with analysis of the cuts and increases, and I suggest that every one of the board members meet with Ms. Haley, I'll show you a full breakdown that she offered to us. And then most things, I left a article on everybody's computer, that on Tuesday, Supreme Court denied Governor Christie's motion to reopen the Abbott decision. This is huge, but as Ms. Haley said, she's cautiously optimistic, so I think it's the first step in the right direction, so we'll see what happens next. No, board members, yes. Myself as chairman, Chris Jennings was present at our meeting, Ms. Cottisbody, and Ms. Acosta is also a member.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Just because Mr. Burke asked, the members of the committee for facilities are, myself as the chair, Mrs. Cottisbody, Mr. Medio, and of course, ex officio would be Mr. Jennings.
Yeah, we're going to get that, we can post that on the website, so everybody can see.
Mr. Jennings? I was waiting for all the committee reports. When I heard Mr. Boardley's comment regarding the non-renewal of the Almond Road lease, I just wanted to mention that I think what we should do, if that is the Facility Committee recommendation, it should go on the agenda for next week, because the Facilities Committee cannot authorize that non-renewal, it has to be the full board. So if, with your permission, I can check with you and Dr. Ruccio, and we can place it on, so that we have an official, formal vote of the Board of Education, then the letter can be written and sent to the state.
Okay, is that all? Okay, anyone else? Okay, any old business? No, seeing none, new business? Motion for adjournment?
All moved.
All in favor?